Somebody have a tie for Ron.
Okay, roll call. City Clerk.
Councilmember, Authority Member Johnson.
Present.
Man. Councilmember, Authority Member Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist.
Here.
Mayor Chair Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Move to excuse man, second. Everybody in favor, nod your head yes. Hit passes. Okay, Housing Authority.
Call to order the Housing Authority meeting, roll call please.
Authority Member Harvey.
Here.
Man. Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Chair Zettel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Move to excuse man, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The invocation tonight is with Pastor Gabriel Rule of Lancaster Baptist Church.
Thank you for this honor, let's pray. To heaven and father, we sure love you and we're so thankful for your love and your goodness to us. Thank you for a beautiful day today. And thank you for this city council and their labor of love. And God, I pray that you bless them tonight and give them wisdom and strength as they make decisions and conduct this business. Lord, I pray that you build a hedge of protection around their lives and their homes. Lord, as we consider all that is going on around us, I pray that you'd give us the courage to do what is right because it is right. And Lord, I pray that you would bless this meeting, may it be profitable. May all that is said and done here bring you honor and glory. And we'll share praise and thank you for the strength and the wisdom with which to conduct this business, in Jesus' name, amen.
City, you want to do the pledge?
Please flag the direct hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a presentation, the Pin or Pencil Children's March by Gwendolyn Cole. Bishop, you don't look like Gwendolyn.
To Mr. Mayor and honorable counsel and to all of the staff and everyone else, thank you all for allowing us to be before you. I have two reasons why I'm before you tonight. One is that on the 13th of September this past year, we had a march along Avenue Inn, with your staff and we sent you a letter, Mr. Mayor, to thank you for Lee and all of the rest of the team that put this together for us. You all reached out to us with everything you had, you put up stages for us. It was just wonderful, could not have happened without you all doing that. And we've come tonight to say thank you in a way that, a little gift for you and everything else, that's part one. Ms. Cole is gonna do that. The other thing I wanted to mention to everyone that is here is that on this coming Sunday, which is the 19th of January, 2014, 4:00 PM, at the Lancaster Performing Arts, we are having what is known as Justice Sunday. And we're looking forward to many people being there, particular law enforcement agencies and so forth that will be making a presentation there. Then we're gonna complete that on that night, and I don't know if this is out of proportion or not, but it'd be too bad to make me take it back after I say it. And that is that there's a group known as the Mighty Clouds of Joy. We had them here at our, at El Pac some years ago. And they will be completing that, that night at our church. So everybody's invited to that as well. So Mr. Mayor and counsel, thank you all so much for all that you did to cause this march on the 13th to be a tribute to young people. And Mrs. Cole can tell you the story.
Henry, before you leave.
Yes.
Can you tell us about Martin Luther King Day?
Oh, the 18th? On the 18th, that happened to be this coming up Saturday. This coming Saturday coming up, we have what we call a day of service. And I think you all remember the time that we used to have just a ceremony over in the El Pac. And then we went from a ceremony to putting it on the street where it really counts. And that is to painting and cleaning the streets and cleaning up the areas that, that pertains to our city to make it the best it can be. And of course, Martin Luther King was about making it happen. And I, I don't know, you didn't tell me how long I had to speak, but I'd like to tell you about.
Bishop, you're the bishop, I'm not gonna tell you when to stop speaking.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. But I'd like to, I'd like to just share this little thought with you that took place in Washington DC on August 28th. We celebrated 50 years that Dr. Martin Luther King had given his speech on "I Have a Dream." So as I stood there at that monument, this very tall statue that was built for Dr. Martin Luther King, I got all our young people up and had them attach it as though he was there. Because there was a spirit in the air and we're continuing to celebrate what Dr. Martin Luther King sensitized America to do. And that is to reach out and become the country that it was set up to be, and that is equitable for every person, no matter whether they be black, brown, white, or from another country or whatever. If you become an American, we honor you. And so I'm just thankful as all get out to have an opportunity to be a part of a day of services on this coming Saturday and to complete that on Sunday at 4 o'clock. Thank you so much for allowing me to spend that time, because every time I say that, I get a little sweat rise up in the top of my head and I'm just thankful to be a part. Thank you so much. And I also appreciate you all for allowing me to, to continue to serve in that capacity to represent Dr. Martin Luther King, I appreciate that. That didn't have to be, but Mr. Mayor and counsel, you all selected to allow me to be mayor emeritus and I honor that. And I promise you, I will never do any different than hold up my city, the city of Lancaster.
Ms. Cole.
I'm, I'm not gonna belabor it, only there's a few things I just wanna point out. We have a presentation. And on the presentation, this was surrounded around the youth. And the youth created the song. We also had a mentor that put together this presentation, so they were very active. They wrote, produced, and created a video behind the song that you will hear with this presentation tonight. So we wanna thank you because we had many challenges between the March on Washington and the March here in Antelope Valley for the continuum. It was a $20,000 project. And Mayor Paris, I have to salute you for leading that with putting the word out to support us. We got plenty of support and we appreciate that. We had other cities. And I'm teaching the children leadership and that's why they're here. They're realizing, coming back to say thank you, coming to ask for help and support is one thing, but coming back and saying thank you is a whole nother thing. We would've been here a lot sooner, but I had pneumonia, so we had to postpone it. So we have our mentees here, as well as our mentors that have come back to say thank you. And I'm dividing them up, because we have a lot of places we have to go. So I just wanna point that out. And at the end of the presentation, they will take it over from there and present what we brought to you, brought for you today. And kinda offside, Vice Mayor Chris, when I saw you on Thursday, I didn't recognize you. And in my culture, the African-American culture, how we say forgive us is we bring food. So, I brought you some.
He doesn't need that.
But these are good cookies. These are made, you know, they got good stuff in there, a little sugar, but look, they got some good stuff in here. So I just want to present to you a little forgive me and, and here, can I present it to you?
Yes.
So this is personally from me, to let you know, thank you and thank you for.
Thank you.
I don't remember ever having a cup of cookie like that.
She recognized you, Henry.
Okay, so you guys stand right there and as soon as the video's over, the two people will be up to thank you.
Thank you so much for letting us.
Thank you for the cookies.
So even though we face difficulties of the day tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream, it's real, and it's American. I have a dream.
Slavery, robbery, people not treated properly. Martin Luther King had a dream, non-violently, he marched, protested for the people to be equal, civil rights, wrongs, hate, skin tones, different names, Caesar, Javits, influential activists, brown skin, Mexican, never thought of giving in, asked, he fought to fight for the rights, to change the labor laws, for rights to defend men, women, and the children, yeah, for justice, equality, and fairness, raise awareness, don't be careless, if we exercise, we can lift the world up. Yes, we can, yes, we can, yes, we can. Understand, you can measure my height, but um, you can never measure my heart, uh-huh.
The Mexican-American people were dominated by a majority of the bandits. More of us have become citizens, we have been ready to be voted.
That was wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. So, on behalf.
I would like to say thank you. I'd like to say thank you too, also.
I wanna say thank you for letting us go to Washington and giving us the experience to go to Washington, thank you.
We were able to take 15 youngsters with us, well, 15 or 18.
15.
15. And they were able to absolutely sit down here, the president's speech, and vote in. It was beyond my wildest dreams, so I want you all to really appreciate it. Captain, thank you all so very much. Fire chief, everybody, captain.
So the green shirts, as you saw, were the shirts that were worn at the march here in Antelope Valley by the children. So, we are bringing you green shirts today for the council. And forgive the sizes, you know, that was a struggle, so maybe it's just a souvenir for some, but.
We'll sew a couple together for.
Don't eat cookies yet, okay? So the children are going to.
Do we have any that you could use for gags?
So, the green ones, you guys go.
Yeah, while we're dispersing, I'd like to say Pastor Hearns and Gwendolyn, that, that day was really a joyful day. It was just so amazing to see all these children marching and being so proud with the event in general. And it was truly a day of uniting as a community. And the, that song that was in the PowerPoint, were there some artists that just made up that song? Correct. And to do that in a week, and it really is a very deep song. And it was a hit. And what's the name of that group?
Uh, it's called Vice, they're Vice Versa.
Vice Versa, that's right. And they're really two great guys and they were so honored to be able to write the music for that event. It was just a very positive, joyful, energetic event. Thank you for allowing us to be part of that.
Well, thank you. And I couldn't remember in my head, I was trying to count all the people in the seats, so forgive me if I come up a little short, but hopefully I brought enough shirts. And so, Captain, I definitely, fire chief, Captain, I know you've got one.
Those are good cookies.
Did everyone get a shirt?
Gwendolyn, did you make the cookies?
I did not, they're from, they're from Trader Joe's.
They're really good.
They're really good. If you feel free to offend me anytime you want.
I don't wanna be in that position again.
Okay, so thank you very much, we appreciate you. And until our next event, what can I say?
Thank you for what you do, thank you.
So I hope that everybody that possibly can be there for an hour and a half with us at the El Pac for Justice Sunday. And I think you'll enjoy it. And also, not only enjoy it, but the captain, he'll be on the panel to answer questions for the young people and we really appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you, Bishop. Okay, we have Marvin Crist is going to be presenting the California Energy, no, wait minute, the Achievement in Reducing Emissions Award, the Air Award to KB Homes.
Tom, could you join me up here, please?
Have become the leader in the, in the nation on this.
This is Tom DePrima, he is from KB Homes. We honored him earlier at the ADA QMD Board for the Air Award. What we did at that was recognize that KB Homes in 2010, KB Homes Southern Division introduced a model home of the future, featuring solar panels, energy storage batteries, and LED lighting. KB Homes Southern California Division was the first to offer solar panels, solar power, solar systems as a standard feature on all new homes. Since 2010, KB Homes built more than 300 solar power homes in the community. KB Homes in the Southern California Division has been chosen as this year's recipient of the ADA QMD's District William Pete Knight Achievement in Reducing Emissions Award. Thank you very much for what you do. Could you say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I, I really wanna thank the, the city for the leadership they've provided us. You know, I think back to a few years ago when we had the conversation about building what we sort of called the House of the Future, and I feel humbled by that with where we're going today and the things we're doing. But it was a great learning lesson for us on how valuable that was to our customers, you know, that are constantly looking for new innovative things in their homes. It's helped us identify where we could build more affordable homes, not just on, on the front end of the home, but once you're in the home and being able to maintain the home and live in the home. And I wanted to share a few statistics because I think it's, it's very worth noting. First of all, in the last two and a half years, with our partnership with SunPower, which was kind of built out of our partnership that we did with, with the city and BYD, we have now installed over 2,350 standard solar homes, which equals about 5.3 megawatts of capacity. And what's really interesting is if you think about the offset on that, and that's just a, that's as of today, and that number just keeps growing and getting bigger and bigger, just those homes alone have an, an offset of annual greenhouse gas emissions of 1,161 passenger vehicles. It has a CO2 emission offset of 624,800 gallons of gasoline, a carbon reduction equivalent to 143,000 tree seedlings grown for 10 years. It's got a carbon sequestered annual leap of 4,570 acres of US forest, greenhouse gas emissions avoided by recycling, 2,800 tons of waste. So just those things, just by putting a few solar panels on some homes, it's staggering. And what's grown out of that is now it just doesn't stop there. What, what we learned in that first home, and, and I'm very excited to announce tonight that we've done this in a few locations from, from Orlando, from Florida, all the way to California. And we will be next, next month unveiling a zero net energy home in the city of Lancaster, which we're really excited to be unveiling. And there's gonna be some new things.
Not as good. That's wonderful.
As you know, it's, as we call it, it's kind of a race to 2020. By 2020, we are gonna be building homes that will be zero net energy homes as a standard. And as you know, we can't reproduce natural gas, so to offset natural gas, you add in photovoltaic. Well, if you think back, we had about 12 kilowatts on about a 1,500 square foot home. And we got to net zero electrical, but we couldn't get to net zero energy. Today, I'm gonna double, nearly double the size of that home with about half the kilowatts of, of solar on it and get to net zero electrical. And what we've learned is you have to reduce before you produce. So you have to make the home very efficient. And we're gonna be demonstrating a lot of new features in that home and I'm, I'm really excited. I don't wanna share too much, because I'm, I think it's gonna be a great day. And, and on top of that, the mayor's kind of challenged me a little bit about what are we gonna do about water? And I've been doing rain dances, sorry it hasn't helped, so now we're gonna see how we can conserve that. A year ago, we took the standard as a company. All our homes are now standard with water sense fixtures on all our fixtures. And we're just continuing to try to raise the bar for, for other builders in this. We're the only home builder that files a yearly sustainability report. It's never pretty when you're building homes, you know, because we do have impact to the environment, but you can't get better if you don't know where you start. And, you know, as I always say, you know, if you get on, if you're on a diet, yeah, you can look at your clothes, but every now and then you have to face the scale and see if you're making results. And that's a little bit what we're doing when we find, file that sustainability report. So I'm really excited about our zero net energy home. We've got a couple really cool features that I think it's gonna be fun to see on how you can fuel your car a couple ways other than with gasoline. We're gonna be introducing some features. And even, we're now really focused on, we, we were the first to build one of the largest multi-family LEED Platinum Homes here in LA County. And we're, we're continuing to build some new LEED homes. And as we focus even, you know, relative to LEED, we're looking at it, at making a home healthy as well. So we're really focused on the air quality inside the home by reducing the VOCs. We're, we're using a lot of new sustainable products. You mean, some of the carpeting we're using are like 70, 80% recycled material and it's phenomenal stuff, it holds up great. And I remember the first focus group I attended where we started asking consumers about, we used the word green. And what we got out of that was when you have a diversified group of individuals in a focus group, where you have, you know, 20-year-olds and 80-year-olds, to get them to consensus on anything is not, not possible, yet we were getting 97, 98% consensus that when you asked them about green, their, the philosophy three years ago was, it will cost me more, it'll work less efficient, but I might buy it because it'd be good for the environment. And so we've started to learn that they're very, very focused. And we said, well, what's the one green thing if you could have, you wanted? And they said, solar. Funny is, solar's not necessarily a green, it's more of a sustainable commodity, but what we're, what we're learned from that is we had to educate our consumers. And now, when you start thinking about green today, it costs less, it's better, it's healthier, and it works and, and it's more efficient. So we've come a long way from the days where you bought something and, you know, the old shampoo I used just didn't make my hair long and curly, but the new stuff's working great. So I'm really, really excited about some of the things we're doing. I use that, didn't, didn't go over as well as normal, but. Thanks, Mark. So I'm really excited about next month on kicking off our, our zero net energy home here in Lancaster.
So are we ready to make it a standard?
Well, we're, we're definitely gonna be there by 2020. Our, our concern is, and you know, interesting, Mayor, you asked that, is it's, we, when we first did the first one, the cost to take a home to net zero energy was about $88,000. We've gotten that down to about $48,000. I don't think we'll get that to, to zero, it's, but we're making a lot of progress and it's, in a short period of time, we've cut that nearly in half. And so our concern is how, how do we continue to fight to 2020 to get that down so that we're not overburdening new homes? And, you know, one of the things I'm passionate about is when you're still seeing 17, 18, 19 resale homes to every new home coming on the market, a simple insulation upgrade in a, in a resale home can offset what, four of those could offset what one new net zero energy home can do. So we've gotta be working on both sides if we wanna really get to this goal of really reducing our carbon footprint and, you know, on the globe. But we're definitely doing our part on the new home side.
So what's involved in retrofitting the, the resales?
And it's just one of those things of trying to, to get the Realtor industry to kinda put their arms around it like we have on the.
I understand the politics of it, what I'm asking you is, is what is required to actually do it, the physicality of doing it?
Well, and we've, we've done some studies and you, most homes especially built post 70s where you've, you've got free accessible attics, you can simply just do an attic insulation upgrade probably to the tune of 1,200 to $1,500 and get, the four of those would get the same carbon offset of taking one new home to, to net zero, so.
So Mr. Bus, can you start working on that? Are you serious?
Because I, I think it's important, I think we're doing it on the one side, but we need to be doing it on all sides, because, and, you know, at the end of the day, the consumer's ultimately gonna win because it's gonna lower those utility costs.
It's just the business model, it's not, I mean, it certainly benefits the consumer.
But we, by 2020, we'll be there for sure. I think at the pace we're going, we're gonna be ahead of it. I think at the pace we're going, we're going to be ahead of it.
Don't be surprised if you're going to have to do it quicker.
Well, you know, in the history of code updates, we've typically had code updates about every four, five, seven years. You know that we're going to now be getting those every three years to get, that we've got the first one rolling in this year, we get another one in three years, and then 2020, we're there. So we're, and if you look at what's going in there, I think people, there's going to be a lot of companies are going to be challenged to understand it because they haven't done it. Well, we've done it, and now we're looking at new ways. And, you know, just to kind of maybe tip one little thing that we're going to demonstrate, when we look at the air quality in a home, when we look at filtering the air that goes through the home, in, you know, a standard home, you would have your air going into all your rooms, and then you'd have a return in one room. To make the home more efficient, we're now returning every room. So we're taking that air out of those rooms and putting air in. And when you do that, it turns it over quicker, and it cools it quicker, or heats it quicker, so your system's running less. So now you're reducing before you're producing. And one of the things we're going to be demonstrating, it's a brand-new product, it hasn't been done, it's been done in other countries, but hasn't been done here yet, is we've gone to these MERV-8 filters that really refine the filters. We're actually said, "Well, how do we get even better?" And so we're looking at a MERV-22 filter, and the challenge with that is it restricts the air so much as it's cleaning the particles that it, the system doesn't work, so now you have to put a bigger system in. Well, we've found a way to be able to put in a MERV-22 without changing the system at all through a simple little hair dryer or blower that runs on the system. And we're going to be demonstrating that in the zero net energy home. And we're hoping to have that all installed.
When are we doing this?
When are we doing it? I think we're scheduled late February.
Mayor Paris, may I put on my planning commission hat for just a moment? I think that's something that I would like to hear more about. There are two commissioners happen to be sitting here, Chairman Vos and myself, but I just wanted to know if it's appropriate if we would possibly see from Mr. Ludiki's staff that, have you come in to make a presentation to the planning commission?
You know, we worked with planning commission about a year ago, and when we were looking at the solar standard, and I really appreciated the commission actually listening to some of her feedback and adopting some of our ideas. And I think that just shows, you know, it's not surprising for me to see you guys win the Eddie Award again. It's just a city that I look forward to coming and working with because we're able to sit down and talk and listen and not just, we'll have our minds made up of how we're going to do it, but how do we do it even better? And that's a great example of doing that. So I'd love to work with you and offer to do that and, you know, probably teach a little bit of what I've learned. I feel like I'm having to become a scientist on some of the stuff I'm having to learn to do, but I love it. It's exciting. And then to see the effect of a homeowner run up and stopping in the street and go, "Three dollars and 80 cents was my utility bill," that's pretty exciting. So, and, you know, to stop me for that reason and nothing else is great. And it just shows you where we've gone and where we are within the community and how excited we are. And to know that someone can, to move into a bigger home and actually have a lower cost of living, that's pretty exciting. Because, you know, as our families grow, we do want to be able to grow with them and not have it tax us on them.
That seems to be a stumbling block when we explain this to people, is that, yeah, the home costs more, but you pay less for it. You know, and we got to figure out a way to present that better. But you remember when we met with the homeowner of the first net zero house? He was able to upgrade because he didn't have an electric payment, an electricity payment to speak of. I think he's paid a total of $50 in two years, wasn't that what he said? We got to figure out a way to educate people on that. All right. I mean, you guys are saving the planet.
I think we're really getting there. Especially, you know, I think about the first homes we did with solar, and people were, "I don't want it. How do I control it? What do I have to do? And, you know, what's the health risk?" And then today, I just read an article today that in 2013, there were more solar systems installed on residential homes than in one year in 2013 that were installed in the last 15 years. So it's definitely, definitely turned the corner in it. You know, this is not technology that's new, it's been out there for many, many years. But in the last few years, putting it on the map, working with you, getting exposure, getting national exposure for it, all of a sudden, everybody's doing it. And I think that's what we have to do with the next stage because it doesn't just stop with what we're producing. And now it's demonstrating the things we're doing to reduce. And there are some really interesting things we've done in this house. And we're actually working with staff, we're going to monitor some of these things and see really how they perform and be able to tell the story on it. Because we've done it in wetter climates, we haven't done it in drier climates, so we're really interested to see how the data compares and learn from some of the things we're doing.
What's the percentage difference in cost, if you know, of a Platinum Leeds home versus a standard home?
Well, the one trick in that question is that we took the stand about three years ago to build all our homes Energy Star certified. We're already bringing in a third-party company that looks at every stage of construction, ensures it's done properly, certifies those stages, and then rates the home by literally testing it at the end. They go in and they seal everything off, they test the efficiency of the home, the windows, the ductwork, and then they give us that certification. So that cost to us is not a cost because we've, and when you do a LEED home, it's the same process they have to be in certifying everything you do. So most builders will look at that and say, "Well, initially, there's a $700 or $800 cost that I won't do it because of that cost." We don't have that cost because we've already taken on as a business practice for us in having a partner in there independent of us that is making sure we're doing it right. And I always like to tell the story that if you just took two homes built to Title 24 standards, and one was done without someone certifying it, it's just based on the charts and someone actually certifying it, I guarantee you they'll score different. And then you take it to us, now we're going to not just big take Title 24, but exceed it by 15%, and now you get a home that is even that more efficient. So that home could be 20% to 30% more efficient than just a new home across the street, and 40% to 70% more efficient than a home built eight to 10 years ago. And I look at an eight to 10-year-old home as a pretty new home.
What's the difference in construction cost?
Difference in construction costs depend, and here's the trick with LEED, and it's really understanding because LEED doesn't just look at energy. So there's the energy component, and the energy component, we've gotten it down to where there's little to no cost for us because we're already building Energy Star. The other component of LEED is air quality, and then it's also connectability. It's the, so you might have a community that isn't within walking distance to buses or to trains, so it wouldn't get points for that. But then you have others that are natural. And I'm amazed when I go into a community and I look at it and I do the quick calculation and go, "This is silver and I haven't done anything. Why would I not do it?" And then to, so, for example, I have a community getting ready to announce that we'll be Platinum, and it was silver when I did it. All of the builders now have kind of been forced to go LEED because I'm doing it and they don't want to compete against me. They're all silver. So basically, they took the gimme points and stopped. I'm going to be Platinum. Ironically, to get to Platinum, it was about $4,200, so I could actually equate that cost. And to me, that was cheap because I know when I start marketing that to the consumer and they realize that one home's going to be 27% efficient and another one's going to be 42, they're going to see those. And then we've been able to patent, you know, our energy performance card, our EPG, which is much like an MPG when you go buy a vehicle. So we can actually demonstrate, and that has been huge for us, where a consumer can really come in and say, "This is the home down the street, and this is your home, and this is where it rated out, and this is where it is." And it's interesting to look at a net zero EPG and see zero. It's pretty exciting. I mean, yeah, you have a cost on gas, which is probably roughly around $40 to $45, but it gets offset because you're getting excess utility savings because the home's so efficient, you're actually putting it in the grid every day.
That's phenomenal. I remember, remember the meeting down in Westwood, and they were telling us they couldn't do it?
Yeah.
We were talking with KB and BYD about building a net zero house, and both companies were saying, "Can't be done." You know, Tom was the only one saying, "Yeah, it can be done." I mean, he literally put his career on the line in making this happen, and he's changed the world as a result because KB is a world builder. I mean, you're one of my heroes. I can't, I can't tell you how proud we are that you did this in Lancaster.
I give credit to the company, though, because they didn't say no. They said, "If you're that passionate about it, do it. But you need to do it." And I said, "I would do it," and we did it. And today, you know, they continue to give me credit, but they were willing to let us do it and try it. And they, you know, and now that's kind of a motto within the company is, you know, if you want to do something, be passionate about it and sell it. And they use it as an example. He was passionate about it and went out and did it.
You were doing it with people that speak Chinese. You do not speak Chinese. It was phenomenal what took place.
There were some interesting meetings, but it was actually fun along the way. I made some great friends along the way with BYD.
We need to give him a key to the city.
He's really made history. He's really changed the whole structure and view.
Nod if it says yes.
Can you nod yes?
All right. Well, again, thank you.
We can do it when we open the house. How's that?
That would be great.
Okay, great.
We, as I said, we wouldn't have gotten the area award if it wasn't for creating a partnership and giving us the opportunity to show what we can do. And, Margaret, I was curious. I went back and kind of researched, and I don't know if builders ever won an award from Air Quality Management District. So I was pretty excited to see that. And that, to me, was a pretty great honor because, again, you know, it's just another way of showing that there's more to what we're doing. I mean, we know the value of bringing homeownership to someone, but then when you, when you can make it be a good thing for the environment when you're doing it along the way, it's definitely a win-win.
I don't think that there's been a builder here that has cared about the community as much as KB has. I don't think there's been a builder here that knows as much as you do. Your presentation just now showed us that you're truly deserving of the Air Award. And congratulations again.
You're in election, you need those builders this month.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks. I mean, really, you made me feel vindicated. Thank you, no. Okay. Brian Ludiki, no, Dr. Mark Marshall. From the Lancaster Human Relations Tapestry Commission.
Good evening. Mayor Paris, council members, city officials. I come to you tonight as a member of the Lancaster Human Relations Tapestry Commission. But before I start, I want to introduce, we have two members in the audience, Dr. Risa Mohammed and Leah Glenda. So I think we should recognize you two. Under the direction of the council, the Lancaster Human Relations Tapestry Commission has developed several programs to assist citizens in feeling comfortable and enjoy living in Lancaster. Tonight, I'm going to highlight our most successful program, our Neighbor-to-Neighbor Mediation Program. This program began in the spring of 2012. We've had 25 mediations to date. Residents come together in a neutral place, meet with a mediator to solve issues. Now, it's open to one or two, any two parties that have been unable to resolve an issue on their own, and they wish to avoid court. So it's a voluntary process. Most of our issues, our cases, have dealt with barking dogs. Out of the 25 cases that we've had, most have been about barking dogs and the noise, and it's a quality of life issue. I've been informed by city staff that this program has had a significant impact on the city and county resources because now those officials have a different route to go to solve these disputes. Now, the program just isn't for barking dogs, even though that's what we've been dealing with primarily, but it's open for neighbors that are interested in resolving neighbor-to-neighbor issues. All city departments, the sheriff's department, any agency that deals with neighbor-to-neighbor issues can refer citizens to the Lancaster Human Relations Tapestry Commission. You know, we open for business. It's a free service, and thanks to those that volunteer their time. I'm the commissioner in charge of the program, and I want to introduce the others that are involved and has made it a success. This is Janine Melatello. This is Shannon Townes. There are, this is the mediator staff right here. Okay?
So you did, just the two of you did the 25?
Yes.
That's a huge commitment of time.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Janine helped develop the program, and she acts as the lead mediator, and she ensures that every volunteer understands the city's program before they begin the process or do the mediation their own. And Shannon started with us in May, and he's been a wonderful addition to the team. So I'd like to ask Janine and Shannon to say a few words. Janine?
Good evening, Commissioner, I mean, that counts, people. My name's Janine Melatello, and I had the pleasure of developing the mediation program. The way the program works is that we allow neighbors to feel heard. Because the problem is, is that these people are calling and calling and calling, and they feel nothing's being done at all. I mean, because really no cold violations are happening, so there's really nothing for the city to do. But we get them into a room, we sit them down, we get them to talk to each other. And in many cases, these people have never even spoken to each other, even though they're next-door neighbors, they're back-to-back neighbors, they're in-the-neighborhood neighbors, they've never even spoken to each other. All they do is do this. So we get them in, and many times when I walk in, they're not even looking at each other. They don't know each other's names. And by the time we're done with the mediation, they've come up with a workable solution on their own, and they walk out having drinks, getting ready for the next garage party or whatever it is. So it's been very successful, and it's been very wonderful and a privilege to be working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Janine and Mark. I too am thrilled, and I look forward to this mediation program where I get to help people better their lives. I have found that sometimes people are afraid of confrontation, so they don't want to speak to their neighbors. But that dog just keeps barking and barking. This process allows us, allows them to feel comfortable, to meet, to meet in a way that they could not have created themselves. Both Janine and I do our best to facilitate good conversation and help both parties feel comfortable. I think we should get T-shirts that say, "Relax, I'm your mediator." Because in just a short while, your problem is going to be history. Thank you.
Excellent. Also, I would like to give a shout-out to Josh Wagner, who's our CSO. And there have been a couple of times when I've actually been afraid of the confrontation that's going on in the room, and Josh has been there to make sure we're all okay, that everything's safe. And I don't know what I would do without him, so I just need you guys to recognize him also. He's fabulous.
And that's part of the reason why we need to get T-shirts that say, "Relax."
Do you want to go on?
No. Well, I want to say publicly, thank you, Janine. Thank you, Shannon. This program would not have been successful without, you know, without them.
This is huge. I mean, I didn't...
I appreciate their dedication and expertise.
The amount of time that goes into a mediation is huge. It's not a small thing.
He couldn't be here tonight, but I do want to also recognize Josh Wagner. Although he's an employee and not a volunteer, he's gone above and beyond to assist residents and help make this program a success. He is the one that gets to respond to all the calls about the barking dogs. And he has investigated, he has a barking dog hotline, okay? So he investigates complaints, and he assesses if there's a violation, and then he informs the residents about our program. So he's a vital member to us, so.
Okay. Is there anything we can do to make it better or help you? Anything you need?
Well, right now, just thank you for letting us have this program and allowing us to come before you. We're very appreciative of our program.
I'm thrilled. It's a great success. It's like things are coming to fruition. It's just wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
We'll take any questions if you have questions.
Yeah.
About the process.
I think as our mayor was just saying, we're just so proud to have you guys here in front of us today and express how you have dedicated your time to your community and to make a difference. And Janine, I can speak on you just to see the growth that I've seen in you personally. I'm just so amazed and so honored to see you up here and how you've become and chosen to become so involved with your community. You're, you know, a wonderful example of how, when we all do, as we are doing as a team, that we make positive things happen. And I'm glad to see you in there, too, because I know your energy's being used wisely.
Yes.
So thank you again, as our mayor said, he's absolutely right.
We might even get you to mediate some things with the council.
Well, we're ready to step up.
We do have dogs barking here, too, the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian Ludiki.
As of January 1st, the city of Lancaster became the first city in California, and we believe in the United States, to require that... believe in the United States, to require that all new residential development provide a solar energy component. This accomplishment would not have been possible without the leadership of the mayor and our city council and without the work of the city's planning commission. And I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Jim Vos, the chairman of the commission, to tell you a little bit about this effort.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've presented to you before and it's statistical and it's boring, but at any rate, the planning commission began its review of the proposed requirements as part of our overall residential development code revisions back in May of 2012. In July of 2012, the planning commission conducted a mobile workshop, as Mr. De Prima pointed out to you earlier, regarding residential solar systems. We visited two active home developments, one on the west side and one on the east side. The workshop allowed the commissioners to view the installations and really understand the issues that builders, developers, homeowners were facing. This allowed us to gain really the insight and understanding and guided us in our analysis and deliberations. We conducted a total of seven public hearings on the proposed residential development codes, ultimately recommending to the city council the residential solar component and the revision to the residential codes in January of 2013.
Thank you, Chairman Vos. Following the commission's recommendation, the city council took up this matter in March of 2013 and at your meeting of March 26th, voted unanimously to approve that revised residential development code, including the solar requirement. Now, it was after you took your action that we really became aware of how groundbreaking this was. We started getting calls and they came from places as diverse as San Francisco and the state of Georgia and even the country of Sweden as to what we had done. And that really hasn't stopped. Even last week, we were contacted by the state of Massachusetts who want to look at our regulations as a guide for developing their own. But we still had one step that we had to take, and that was gaining the approval of the California Energy Commission in order to enforce the solar requirement. So in working with a very supportive and helpful staff member there, Mr. Joe Lawyer, two of our staff, Craig Earl, our principal plan check engineer, and Chan Ying, an associate planner, we were able to put together the formal application and the supporting documentation to the California Energy Commission. On December 11th, last month, I had the privilege of representing the city at the CEC Business Meeting in Sacramento at which they approved our solar requirement. In closing, what I would really like to leave you with are two comments that were made by members of those of that commission as they considered this matter. The first from Commissioner Karen Douglas. She said, "I've had the opportunity to visit the city of Lancaster and meet the mayor and some of the senior city staff, and I just want to say that they are taking some very impressive leadership in the area of clean energy. And I'm pleased to see them arrive at this point where we're considering approval of this item and I'm looking forward to continued leadership from the city of Lancaster and continued partnership moving forward." Commissioner David Hoxchild also stated, "I'd just like to add, if you could convey to the mayor, I really think that Lancaster has distinguished itself by doing this. I think it's quite uncommon, actually, for cities to come and go above and beyond the already rigorous standards that we are setting. And I think this is really a path-breaking act, so I want to congratulate you and the rest of your team at the city for doing this." I thanked them and promised them I would relay their comments and I am relaying them to you now. This is the resolution that was approved and signed by them, and I would like to present that to the city. And once again, thank you so much. Our staff had a great time working on this. We learned a lot. Mr. De Prima is a wealth of information and we're ready to take on the next challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm really glad to hear you're ready to take on the next challenge.
Always ready.
You know, from the council point of view, what I'm asking you to do on this takes courage. You know, we're pushing the envelope, but I still want to keep pushing it. I mean, this is just a beginning. The goal of us being a net-zero city and a template for the world is absolutely essential, not only for us, but for the rest of the world. And the fact that they're calling you and asking you how to do it tells me we should be pushing further. And so I want dates of when we meet benchmarks. I mean, you guys took a lot of heat for doing the 1 kilowatt. Well, let's see how much more heat we can generate. As long as the business model makes sense, as long as the actual citizen of Lancaster ends up spending less money, not more, I think we should push it to the absolute limit. So let's do that in 2014. Let's have it. And if it's achievable before 2020, let's set that as the benchmark, that that's when it has to be done. And the other builders are just going to have to figure out how you're doing it. But what we can't do is hold back because some builders haven't, don't know how to do it, which also means, though, that KB is going to have to share this. It can't be proprietary. Otherwise, I don't know how we get around the outrage, you know, if we ask them to do something they can't do. But we should have a great year in putting this together. And Brian, thank you so much. Any other city, it would have been so easy for you guys to just slow-play it that it never would have happened, but you guys dove in.
I think our favorite comment was from the city of Sebastopol, which lamented that they were the second city to be looking at it.
Thank you. Okay. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Any speaker cards on the council minutes?
No.
Shall we do a voice vote to approve them?
Motion to approve M1. Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Consent calendar.
We've got a new law under the Brown Act requiring us to record all votes, so where we have a unanimous vote, we do need to state it on the record.
Okay, that was a unanimous yes vote?
We do have a speaker card on the consent calendar, CC2.
Let's pull CC2.
I'll move to approve that consent calendar is currently comprised.
A second.
Let's vote. Okay, CC2. Who do we have? I don't understand your question.
Same calendar? Is that really a different one?
It's the same one that's posted and it's on the web and there is no different consent calendar. There could be a different meeting. Okay, moving on. Mr. Reeves?
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. The council will indulge me for a second. I would like to welcome councilman Smith back. And I'm glad that we have the benefit of his services. He served his community as a planning commissioner, as vice mayor and councilman, and I'm really happy that he was not seriously injured.
Boy, thank you, Martin.
Looks pretty serious to me.
Feels a little serious, but...
I mean, I don't know if folks understand, he just had major surgery and it's astonishing to me that he's sitting there. If it was me, he wouldn't see me for two months.
And no meds, right now.
Really?
No meds.
Weird scene.
So I could be lucid for a minute.
Also, the council indulged me. I'd like to commend our city clerk and her staff for handling the hectic nature of the process of pulling papers and filing and qualifying for the city election on April 8th. Jerry Bryan and her staff proved what I've always said up here, that we have an exceptional staff in this city and citizens should be proud. Now, that's the nice thing. I would like to make some comments on the check register tonight. There's about $200,000 that I have a question about. Excuse me, $100,000 of it I can go along with because $90,000 is for the animal shelter and $10,000 is for Grace Resources, so I won't touch on that. What disturbs me is that we're spending a lot of money on advertising and paying people like the Valley Press, Tehachapi Lifestyle Magazine, Animal Broadcasting, Tehachapi again, High Desert Broadcasting, we're sending, and also David Communications, we're spending a ton of money for advertising. And, you know, they should be paying us for it because when they print stuff about the council and the city government, it's to their benefit. They can sell advertising and make money. I question one thing. I would like to know, why is it necessary for us to belong to the League of California Cities when we have to pay $30,000 a year in dues? I mean, I think that's rather excessive. I hope that we get the benefit. And finally, I mentioned this before on a prior time, about Canon copier. We have a Canon copier lease of $9,000. That's kind of excessive for a copier lease. We've discussed that before. I'd like to know, why can't we do something besides having to pay a Canon copier $10,000 a year? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Is there a motion? Move to approve CC2?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's right, let's vote. Sorry.
Rex, you need to vote.
I did vote.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, it's unanimous. All right, moving on. PH1, Mr. Ludiki.
You have to open the public hearing.
Okay, let's open the public hearing.
Mayor Paris, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a resolution that would adjust the, what's known as the Consolidated Fire Protection District Adjustment of Developer Fees. This is a fee that the city has collected for a number of years. We actually act as the collector of it. It is transmitted to the Fire Protection District of Los Angeles County and it is used for the capital costs to construct the fire stations. As we've noted to you in the staff report, this is based always on an adopted capital improvement program that the Board of Supervisors adopts. From that adopted plan, they determine, based upon various areas of the county, what the appropriate fee should be for new development. Under the proposal that is before you and what the Board of Supervisors adopted, the current developer fee of 87.55 cents per square foot would actually decrease through this to a total of 84.26 cents per square foot. All of the fees that are collected are only used to benefit the Antelope Valley area of benefit. There are two other benefit areas, one that covers Malibu and Calabasas and one that covers the Santa Clarita Valley. Those fees do not, or our fees do not go to cover costs in those areas. Those fees in those areas are actually somewhat higher than they are within our area. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So you're seeing that the fee is being reduced?
Yes, from its current level.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Reeves?
Mayor, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I do read the attachments, as you well know, to these items on the agenda. And on the attachment for this Consolidated Fire Protection District thing, it says that, quote, "Finds that new development in the city of Lancaster will generate increased concentration of residents, commuters, businesses, and visitors to the city, thereby imposing increased demand for fire station and emergency medical facilities." I mean, can we do better than that? Can we show statistics and prove how it's going to happen? Or do we just have an editorial remark with somebody saying, "Well, if there's more people, we're going to need more fire stations." I think we ought to have a little more statistical information. On page three of one of the attachment, it talks about a proposed fire station 174, which is going to, total cost will be $4,423,000 and the developer fees will generate $294,000. Okay, that's fine. And then it talks on page seven about fire station 109 at Fox Field, $9 million. Fire station number 13, $8,736 million. Fire station 196 is going to cost $8,736. The last three fire stations, there's no mention of developer fees that are going to help pay for them. So that's my cost. The total cost of all these fire stations in Lancaster will be $21 million. The developer fees are going to cover $748,000 of that $21 million. I'm just wondering why the last three fire stations don't have any developer fees helping pay for the fire stations. Thank you.
Close the public hearing?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 14-02.
A second.
Let's vote. Okay, new business item one. This is not a public hearing. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Paris, city council members. Before you tonight is the framework of the agreement that we have with Los Angeles County for the sheriff's services that we enjoy. It's a five-year period. The last time you approved this was 2009. I had the honor of representing some of the cities as one of the city managers there. There's been a couple of changes, but in terms of talking about this, I want to try to make it simple. You have an agreement that says the parameters under which law enforcement services are provided, but it's like if you hire a consultant or a developer. If you depend upon the agreement itself to manage and to control what's happening, that's not how you do it. In Lancaster, we're blessed with a very aggressive public safety office led by Lee Derico and an exceptional captain, Pat Nelson. We're on a daily basis, we are working on deployments, initiatives, things of that nature. That's where the real work is done. Also, as you recall in the last budget discussions, we're able to jointly work with Pat and with Lee and Brendan Kamelowski to get the county sheriff's department and the county to provide additional resources at no cost to the city because those are resources we weren't getting. So my message to you is what I learned in working with some of the other cities is we're pretty far ahead, thanks to the work of the people I just said, in how we manage it. What you're asked to prove here is that parameter which allows those cities to, or those services to continue, but by no means is this how we manage public safety. There have been a couple of changes, the primary change of which is putting a contractual mechanism in place that if things aren't done as they should be, i.e. deployments, busted cars, et cetera, there is a contractual mechanism all the way up to the sheriff's office itself to deal with this. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ludiki. Mr. Reeves, you must be running for something.
It's going to be a long night. Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I read the attachments. I want to commit the city attorney this time for the attachment. We had the attachment with the lines and it making corrections in the old contract and then we had the attachment with the completed contract. That's good. That's progress. Instead of having just one where you cross things out, they showed you how the contract was completed. So that's a positive thing. One thing in the contract that disturbed me is if I read it right, I'm not a lawyer, sheriff is an officer of the city, but the city worker is not an officer of the county. So, I mean, if something happens and the sheriff... So, I mean, if something happens and the sheriff is an officer of the city, are we liable? That's just something else. And another thing, in the contract it says, quote, "Within city limits." Do we pay for outside the city? I'm not clear about that. And also, why a five-year contract? And also, we're, I understood that we could, we could have solicited bids from any agency to do police work for our city. Did we solicit bids from Kern County or any of the other agencies around to see if it would be cheaper? This is, nothing against the sheriff's department. We have a great sheriff's department. They, they go through a lot. Every week, I think about the sheriff's deputy in Palmdale two years ago that had his ear bitten off and it couldn't be sewed back on. So, the sheriffs in the Antelope Valley have to deal with a lot and I admire them for them and it's nothing personal, but if, if we're trying to keep expenses down, we do have an obligation to try to get the least inexpensive law enforcement that we can. Another thing is, the contract is going to give us this idea to, if we don't like the way things going, we can have the city manager complain to, to the sheriff, whoever it's going to be. No, if you're going to give the job to the sheriff, you let the sheriff do the job, you keep your mouth shut until the contract comes up for renewal. That's what happened in New York City with former Commissioner, now Commissioner again, Bratton and the mayor of New York. You get this competition. You either give the man the job, let him do the job, then when it comes up for renewal, you make a comment about it. You can't have a city manager, city council overseeing a police department and making decisions which they don't know anything about. Thank you.
What about Wackenhut? You think they'd do it cheaper? Never mind, never mind. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve MB1?
Second.
It's unanimous. Maybe we'll talk to Wackenhut next year. Okay. Council report, Vice Mayor Crist.
I would prefer, if possible, to let Mr. Reeves go first so I can answer some of his remarks.
Mayor, Council Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I have a comment about expenditure of the AVTA, Vice Mayor Crist, and Councilwoman Johnson. They're going to spend $171,155 to do an analysis of a 10-year plan. Is that really necessary? I mean, at this point where you can generate statistics and things from the computer, we can do it, is it necessary for us to pay almost $200,000 for, have someone tell us what's going to happen in the next 10 years? I don't, I don't think anybody knows what's going to happen in the next 10 years. Why is this needed? Thank you.
What they're doing is they're doing projections and the projections are, part of the projections are they're looking at a rapid bus system between the two cities, the two cities between, actually between the mall and the boulevard. So it will be coordinated through a direct link that will have all the lights coordinated with it. It will look at the expenses, it will look at where our bus routes are. Are we doing it effectively, efficiently? We currently allow the handicap, the veterans and the elderly to ride for free. We're the only bus district in the United States that allows those people to do that. We're looking at if that's a good policy. They recommend that we stay at over 20%. We're at 24% recovery rate on our bus systems. So there's a lot of different reasons why we do it. We like an independent firm to come in and solidify what we're doing and to make progress. There's going to be a lot of growth in the city and we're trying to make sure that we're ready for it. So thank you, Michael.
Anything else? Is that it? Thank you. Housing Authority, no action required. Finance Authority, no action required. Power Authority, no action required. Successor Agency, no action required. City Manager.
Yes, thank you. Three things. One, we'd like to invite the public out for MLK Day of Service this Saturday. You can go online, you can call and you can volunteer for projects. There's, I think it's over 30 projects now. Last year, we had 2,000 volunteers. So it's a real opportunity to give back to your community and it's a lot of fun. Even if you give an hour, it makes a huge difference. I'd also like to ask Kelvin Tinatongo to talk briefly about Destination Lancaster and the rather innovative, I think, and necessary program they just did. You're going to be getting a report on Destination Lancaster next couple of months, a more formal report from the board members, but I want Kelvin to talk about what they've done recently. And after that, I'm going to read a letter from Sheriff Baca. Kelvin first.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, members of City Council. Last week, the, what Destination Lancaster did was actually schedule what we called a hotel tour or a familiarization tour for the hotel staff. And we did that primarily to give the opportunity, firsthand knowledge for the hotel staff to really experience what Lancaster has to offer because oftentimes, probably every day, guests come in and want to know as their, as part of their overnight stay, where to go eat, what to do while you're in Lancaster, where to shop. And one of the things we do recognize is, while it's very easy for our hotel staff to direct them to, where a majority of the commerce here is in the Antelope Valley, we really wanted to impress upon them that there's a lot more things happening locally here. And so we organized was a tour last week. Really focused on in the downtown area. And one of the things that we kept on hearing from the staff during this tour was how amazing and how they weren't really aware of actually going to these areas and they, they were familiar with things like LPAC and MOA and some of the businesses on the downtown, but they really didn't have the opportunity to actually experience those. So what we did is we coordinated a tour, which included MOA. The curator there gave an excellent tour of the facility. Many of them were not familiar with that. Same thing with LPAC. Also, we had the opportunity to have them visit a number of the downtown businesses, including Bex with the Underground Bowl, the nightclub there that offered nightlife for guests here in Lancaster. They had the opportunity to visit Portavino Wine Lounge and our local brewery, Kinetic. And in those areas, they actually were able to sample the food that were offered and some of the beverages also were offered there. And each location, they were absolutely amazed of what we have here in the downtown area. And then we culminated the tour at the AB Winery, recognizing that there's actually a number of wineries here in the Antelope Valley, stretching from Tehachapi to Ugalduce and actually a couple directly here in, in the Antelope Valley. And it was very appreciative from the staff. It opened their eyes to a number of things that are right here in their backyard and it gives them the opportunity to really explain to the guests what really is happening here in Lancaster. We've encouraged everyone that's part of our hotel industry to continue to visit Destination Lancaster, its website, because there is, it's a, it's a great opportunity to see what is there to do here in Lancaster. The program looks at not only marketing outside of the Antelope Valley to, to bring people into the Antelope Valley, but what to do once they get here. And so we are really making that effort to educate our hotel industry. We want to continue this kind of education program with them, looking at customer service programs and how to deal with their guests. I think they all believe that they know how to do that, but we want to look at it more from a tourism side of things and from the tourism side, bringing in some experts from the tourism side and how to really sell the, the community that we're in. So that was a start for them and they really appreciated and I think they learned tremendous amount in just a four-hour period.
Any questions?
And if I can add just one more thing, because as we visited these locations, there was the networking that started to occur with all of these businesses and I think that was one of the goals where we have, Councilmember Mann is on, on the board for Destination Lancaster and Vice Mayor Smith is, it was, you know, his vision to always say, you know, we need to get the Chamber of Commerce involved and get the businesses involved. And we started to see that evolve instantly before our eyes as each of these businesses were talking to the hotel staff, how they can create a better experience for the guests by having them involved and putting together packages for their guests. So I think that's a great start and we want to continue that effort. So the nexus of bringing in our local businesses involved with the hotels is, is something that everyone's looking forward to do.
Thank you.
And if I may, Mayor, I'd like to read a letter from Sheriff Baca. It was addressed to me, but as representing the city and I'll read the pertinent parts. It's two paragraphs. "I wanted to take this opportunity to personally notify you of my pending retirement at the end of this month. The reasons for doing so are many. Some are most personal and private, but the prevailing one is the negative perception this upcoming campaign has brought to the exemplary service provided by the men and women of the sheriff's department. They have conducted themselves with the utmost integrity and professionalism, resulting in yet another year of historic crime reduction in nearly half a century. In my opinion, your sheriff's department is the greatest law enforcement agency in the world. I extend my deepest gratitude to you for allowing me to serve the people of this county for the past 48 years. I would also like to thank your city and its residents for their trust and commitment in allowing the sheriff's department to be its law enforcement agency. My successor in the interim will be appointed by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Please be assured, the sheriff's department is in the capable hands of executives with impeccable core values and will continue to provide the highest quality of law enforcement services to its contract cities. Signed, Sheriff Lee Baca." And he will be retiring at the end of this month.
Thank you. Anything else? Any questions? I have one thing. Mr. Galindo has come up, Mrs. Galindo, come up with a plan that I think has merit of how to keep from confiscating cars of people who don't have driver's license. And I would like that to be, I'd like the sheriff's department and you and staff to, in the next two weeks, figure out a way to make it viable, if possible, and then have it ready for us at the next meeting, okay?
We will get back to you. I, it's going to-
Actually, you may want to, you may want to run it through criminal justice first.
Right, it's, we've, having done a lot of work on it, I think it's going to take more than two weeks, but we can put on criminal justice next one with the recommendation and work.
Are you on a path? I, I think that that is a pressing need in the community to, to not have people lose their jobs because they can't get to work. We've got to figure out a way to separate, to separate people so that we, we don't have that impact. Okay. Thank you. Let's go to the speaker card, city clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and as clearly as possible so that if the city manager, the city council, and staff need to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Okay. David Paul, you want to go first?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I want to tell you a story tonight about the magical equity in life that can be drawn by doing the right thing, as was mentioned in our prayer. At the Tapestry Commission meeting last December, it closed with one of the commissioners suggesting that someone drive home a young lady that he saw getting out of a cab to come to the meeting, and I took him up on his offer. Now, fast forward to last Friday and I had been out collecting signatures and I was really spent and I had to go over, wait 40 minutes. So I went over to one of my favorite places, the Senior Center. I've been there a dozen times in the last two months, looking for another sweet lady I haven't seen for quite a while, and now I'm full of joy. But when I got there, there is my other gal pal and I told her what was happening and time was about up to come back and I went into the bathroom, as I usually do, and had the most unusual experience of my life. I actually blacked out, I lost consciousness, and I came to looking at this urinal wall, wondering where I was and all the things that go through your head, remember where you were last, all these things. And then myself, I'm telling myself, you know, this is not good. But I came back to City Hall to find out how I did and I, I was wiped and I needed one more signature. And what happened next, I'll tell you what, I'll cherish forever, because I had our assistant city manager, our city manager and our city clerk, and they surrounded me with an envelope of love. They filled me up and they pumped me up and I went back out and I went back to the Senior Center and my dear friend is still sitting there in the chair. I know she's solid gold, I know how long she's lived in her house, I know how long she's owned the house, and she signed the paper and I came back and it was finished. And I can't tell you how much that meant to me. I was in a bad state and you helped me and propped me up and I will cherish what you did for me forever that day. So, just thank you. What I see here tonight, what I see in my community, it brings me such joy. We're doing great things, Mayor. Thank you for all you do. Council, Commissioners, it's just a joy to be part of this city and I wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And maybe next time, they'll call an ambulance in addition.
We opted for pizza and water and rest instead.
Ed Galindo. Ready?
Your Honor, Council Members, I really want to thank you all. GED program is on the way. It's going. Everything, it took us a long time and you did a great job and I want to thank Mark and Mr. Tetenjaco. The whole, the whole group worked together and we got this thing going. There's other things in the future that we're going to be doing, we're going to be expecting. But one thing I do want to tell you that the Mexican council from here in Los Angeles saw what we are doing with our GED program and believe it or not, they're going to start something like this in Mexico. And this is, I think this is a real feather in our cap. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, if I may add to that, I had the honor of being able to be there today to announce the GED program. Mr. Galindo, thank you for what you've done and you are truly a man of not just talk, but of action. And today was an example of that. To be able to have all the partners that we needed to make this happen today and to see all of these families and they were bringing their children too, to show them that they are going to do all of they can with the opportunities that are being given to them here in Antelope Valley to be able to be productive citizens and to be able to feed their families and be an example for their children. It was truly a very positive day and like we were saying, si se puede. Thank you, sir.
You just did that so they know you speak Spanish.
Yes, very well. Muy bueno.
Heather Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I know you guys just think, ah, she's going to complain about the water again. I attempted to call Mr. Lutzegian twice after you suggested he check out my water and I did actually try to get my nomination papers and I had more than enough, but sadly, I guess 11 of them were, even though I know all of them are registered voters, they were disqualified. But I was going to suggest a couple of things after listening to tonight's meeting. The bus systems, why don't you just put some kind of a voting, a card on the bus for people- of a voting, a card on the bus for people who ride? Then you'd get a direct response, whether they're happy, suggestions they might have. Then you won't have to pay anybody. All you'd have to do is pay for the pencils and the cards on the bus. You get an actual true response from the people that ride the bus, whether they're happy or what can improve it, other than paying what this man suggested was kind of an exorbitant amount. But the families, I did a poll for the water situation this weekend, and I polled fifty, or I'm sorry, thirty families, okay, college-level professionals, seventeen of them out of the thirty, under six months to a year they've lived here, and they were considering moving out because of exacerbated health conditions, okay? Usually it's asthma. I found out that they were having worse asthma, which their doctor had suggested they move from LA to here, okay? Twenty-eight of the families noticed an increased health problem after they moved here from wherever they had moved from. They didn't know what it was from. Some thought it was the air. Others said, well, it got worse since summer. So because of the wintertime, we're all closed in, and I said, well, sometimes there's more germs and everything. You're closed in the house. You don't get fresh air. Twenty-three of them were concerned and were definitely concerned leaving. Nineteen noticed a connection between the conditions were exacerbated from the water. And most, again, the most complaint was asthma, had been exacerbated. And there was a cough, which I noticed. There was a lady here coughing, and I believe one of the council members was coughing, that seems to come on once a week, a couple times a month, that you don't, you don't feel ill, but you can't seem to get rid of it, which is all stemming from the water. Also, I'd like to say, you know, I would be kind of concerned if I was law enforcement, because the gang members, as we were saying, you know, while they don't probably buy bottled water, are going to be much more irritable, and overexposure to ammonia, headaches, lethargy, you know, delusions, homicidal ideation, which means they snapped killing people much quicker. And if I was law enforcement, I would want something to be done about the water, because I wouldn't want to be putting my deputies in that condition where they go out for responders to that kind of condition. Anyways, hopefully Mr. Bozegian will call.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
So do you think we could get bottled water for the gang members with ammonia in it?
I don't know.
Possibility.
I religiously return all my calls, so if I miss that particular one, that's it. We did deal with Ms. Brown. We did have Water Works Forty go out, do the testing as directed by council. I believe we're reported back to. If we haven't, I apologize, but we've done everything that was directed by council, and we will report back to her tomorrow.
Thank you. Elizabeth Torres?
Hello. I lived in the Alamo Valley for seventeen years, and I'm an activist and poet. So there's some things that need to be improved, so I'm going to read this poem, and then I'm going to tell you which areas, because I've witnessed a lot, and something needs to change. Customer service. Customer service should be helpful and polite. No attitude. Don't put up a fight. I rate customers once they're refund. Customer service won't give one. I've been on the other end, listening to complaints and lectures, customers telling the company how to change their job structure. Not all customer service is your enemy. Some are efficient and friendly. It goes both ways. Does it really pay being rude to a customer? Now, what needs to be improved is the Lancaster City Library. I've witnessed employees laughing at the homeless, gossiping, and my thing is, is that I feel that the homeless people are intelligent, some are very educated, and they do hang out at the library. But I feel that the librarians are not like the old-school librarians. It's just so laid-back and carefree. They do whatever they want. So please, improve the customer service in the library. And there are some other places that I would, I don't want to say right now, but the number one, where the homeless are mostly during the day. Lancaster employees, immature, gossiping, laughing at people, and I'm there all the time, and I'm watching. And there's children there. So safety with security, they need to watch the children's area, the bathroom area. There's a lot of, you know, suspicious things going on in the library, hanging out, sleeping, creeping around, just perverts. So improve customer service, and also how you talk to people matters. Thank you.
You know, I want to, I want to clarify something. That's the Los Angeles County Library, and we don't really have any ability to do anything there. And, you know, we take the rap for it because it's in the city of Lancaster, but it's a county facility. Now, maybe the city manager could give you Norm Heckley's cellphone number. He's the county representative, and obviously, we have some concerns about exactly what you're talking about, but there's just nothing we can do.
Okay. Well, the people that are listening, that deal with the public, you know, I'm speaking for the voices of the underdogs who are not, who can't speak without being retaliated, you know, so I'm just saying-
I agree. I don't think a person's economic status-
-how you talk to people really matters, and how you look at people, because I look directly in the eye, and I'm speaking up because I'm not afraid.
I think the way, I don't think economic status should dictate how you're treated. I think everybody should be treated respectfully. And, you know, we will make some inquiry, but we'll also give you the number.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Jim Barlata?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the council. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for a great year we just finished up in 2013. I think this city has gone through a lot of positive things, and here to be commended. You know, every once in a while, one of my friends out there will have something negative to say about what goes on in City Hall, you know, why are they doing this, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, you have to overlook the many good things that's been going on. And to me, what few bad things there might have been, if any, are outweighed by far by all the good things. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I also like to thank the members of the council who opposed the Palmdale Power Plant. I really do appreciate that, mainly because my home is out there in the East Side, and for four days since 1974, I've been breathing nice, clean air out there. I want to continue to do that. And the way it looks right now, I'm kind of wondering if I'm going to be able to do that or not. My family's out there. And I just wonder how that committee forgot, that's the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report, with all the residents that's on the east side of Lancaster.
They lied, that's how.
Well, obviously.
All right.
So that's one question. How do you get past it? The credits. If this power plant is so clean, like I hear people say it's so clean, of course, the people that are saying that don't live on where I live. If it's so clean, why do you even need these credits? They must think we're all a bunch of people that can't understand right and wrong out here. If you need these credits, obviously, it's not clean. And I seen comments, I saw one in the paper, I think from Mr., I forget his name now, but anyway, he said, you know, I drive by that plant, I turn Victorville pretty regular, and I'd never seen a plume of black smoke. Oh, no. But the trouble is, the pollutants that comes out of that thing, you can't see. You get behind a well-maintained automobile today, and you stand behind it, you're not going to see any smoke. But you breathe that stuff, you'll know if you've been breathing something bad. So anyway, I just don't understand how they got the okay to go ahead where they did, but I still feel that what Mr. Antanovich did is a conflict of interest. I don't care how you look at it when you poll it. A gentleman like Mr. Lawson off the voting board for one day and put him back on? I mean, if that's not a conflict of interest, I don't know what it is. And I sure hope this thing is not going to be put to bed and just forgotten about. And I want to thank you people again. Thanks once again from me. I appreciate what you do.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you.
Michael Reeves, that was an example for you.
Mayor Perez, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. The other day, the neighborhood cat that resides on West Avenue J-9 between 10th Street West and 12th Street West was not reporting for duty. And I hadn't seen her for a couple of days, so I thought she might have been picked up by the animal shelter. So I took a trip out to Avenue I to the animal shelter. I worked there once for six months as a volunteer in the old days. I couldn't take it anymore. I couldn't take it that they put animals down. Any rate, I went out to the animal shelter, and it's been renovated, and they've done a really good job of renovating the buildings. They separated the cats from the rest of the animals. They have their own separate things. They have a medical facility for the animals now. They've done a really good job of separating the buildings and the animals. So I went into the place for the cats, and the guy was not able to help me, even though there was a computer there. So he said, you have to go to the front desk. So I went into the main office, and nothing's been done to the main office. It's the same slow stuff, small desk, only a few people working, and a lot of stressed-out people who are in the lobby waiting to check on animals. So after waiting thirty-five minutes, I walked up and I was able to give them the name of the cage of an animal that I thought looked like the neighborhood cat to run it and see if that was the cat. It took her five seconds to do it, and she said, no, it's not the cat. So why can't, we spend ninety thousand dollars on this last check register, paying for housing costs for animals, why can't we have a system like you do at the library, where the citizen can go in and use the computer, put the number in on the animals, see if there's a hold on them, check their own animals, put an animal on hold? They do it at the library. Why can't we do it at the county animal control shelter? It would expedite things, and we need to remodel the office over there and make it more conducive for it to help people, because people are really stressed out in that lobby, and they shouldn't have to wait thirty-five minutes to get a five-second answer.
Mr. Mayor?
By the way, the cat showed up same afternoon, but it wasn't, it wasn't a bad trip. I got to see the animal shelter and see how they renovated it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the animal control shelter has a website that if you lost your dog or you're missing an animal, you can go on there, and as soon as they get that animal, they take pictures of them and put them up on the, on the web, and you can look through all the cats and all the dogs and see if one looks like the one you're looking for. Pat, you should do that at the Sheriff's Department.
(laughing)
Yeah, no, I'm serious. I mean, you know, you arrest somebody, take their picture, put it on the website, then, you know, you don't have to take the phone calls, and you know, just a thought. What? No? Okay. Did I overshare again?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Are you going to point out it's a county facility?
Oh, that's right. Mr. Reeves, the animal control shelter is a county facility, and we will be happy to give you Norm Heckley's cellphone number. Okay. In fact, why don't we just post Norm Heckley's cellphone number on the city website? And some people say I'm vindictive, but I don't get it. Do you? All right. Thanks. All right. That concludes the speaker cards. Thank you for coming. I hope you enjoyed the meeting. We're going to go into executive session and talk about-
Can I say some announcements before we do, or do we say that after closed session?
No, yeah, you can do whatever you want.
Sure. Okay.
Just wanted to announce, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to announce that we are having the Color Me Red. That's the 5K wanted. It's scheduled for February 1st. We already have thirty-four hundred people registered for that evening, or excuse me, that day, I should say. We have some wonderful local sponsors that have also committed, and some of them are Waste Management, Remax, All Pro. Pace Car is sponsored by Hunter Dodge Fiat, and AV Harley-Davidson, and Allied Health are some wonderful sponsors for this event. It is February 1st. It is at the Pioneer Event Center. We are having a wonderful time putting it together and realizing that we're having such a great response to be able to show a lot of people what our city's about, and that we're about family and about being safe and having a good time. It's a great time for all of us families to come together and get some exercise going. It's for a great cause, and we're looking forward to seeing a lot of us locals there, and also a lot of people from outside to get involved. I know our mayor was asking, what is that about? And I told him, you know, we get to throw colors at people, and I think he volunteered so you can get to throw some colors at him, and looking forward to that.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to let people throw things at me in hope that it's just colored flower.
Right. So let's all start practicing and getting ready for the event, and let's all start seeing each other jogging around town to get, you know, in shape for that February 1st.
I'll ask my wife if it's okay.
Also wanted to mention, we have a few candidates here that have been here that are running for council, and we, as councils, would like to welcome all of them. And I know we have David Paul, who's come up and spoken, and we have Michael Reeves, who's also come up. But we also have a young lady there, Lisa Rodriguez, that we'd like to also welcome to the campaign, and we wish you guys all the best, and we're thankful that you care enough about your community to do what you're doing. So thank you.
Lisa, I was wondering who you were.
That's Lisa Rodriguez.
Oh, great, great.
You know, since it is Martin Luther King's weekend, I like to end it by just saying a quote, and it is, "The time is always right to do what is right," by Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Wait a minute. I have to put my two cents in. Okay.
Three cents.
Emergency shelter at the fairgrounds is open. Great response that we're having from Grace Resources. The community has really stepped up and allowed Grace Resources to be the main focus of it. They're coming in, they're feeding the individuals on a, twice a day. So we're having different restaurants that come in and that have done that. But the most important part is, is that they have split the men from the women, so it's no longer a shelter that just holds both. The emergency shelter at the fairgrounds is men-only. The bus that has been donated by the fairgrounds, the AVA QMD, East Side School District, all of those is taking everybody over, staying there. We have provisions for emergency response, so it's great when a community comes together to help the homeless, and hopefully it'll work out.
You know, my brother's involved in that, and he was telling me today that it was Ryan Christ, who has just done a phenomenal job organizing that, keeping everybody moving and making that happen. What's remarkable about that is I think Ryan's, what, twenty, twenty-one?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. He looks twenty-one. But he's a young man who's still in school, and it's just truly, you know, you did a good job with it.
He did.
You should be proud. No, you did a good job with him. You should be proud.
He's, he's doing a wonderful job, and it's, it's nice to see the two cities working together. A lot of people don't realize that we've been working together on this for close to a year now, but both cities are working very closely together to help our homeless. And, you know, the majority of those people out there are veterans, so we need to help them.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're sure? Okay. We will now recess to closed session for the purpose of, I don't have to read all this stuff.
Discussing the items listed on the agenda.
Discussing the items listed on the agenda. Thank you. We'll be back.
In closed session, we discuss the matters of Palmdale versus Lancaster and three matters of anticipated litigation as listed on the agenda. Council gave direction to the city attorney.
Ms. Zito.
The Housing Authority meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, January 28, 2014, at 5:00 PM.
The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, January 28, 2014, at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done. I'm- Carol, my day is done, I'm coming home, but I understand you're out having dinner with your friends.
But he's not hungry.
I'm not hungry.